I'm in that department, but it is whether you're president of your work.
I am.
Jim is our elder.
Quite a bit.
Yeah, I'm still dealing with grandchildren.
I'm a generation past.
All right, Penny, we up? All right. We'll call the meeting to order. I'm gonna start the meeting out by saying that this is Dan Delier's last day as served as a councilperson up here up front in the chamber and his wife Lori is here and just wanted to thank her for her sacrifice. Whether it's during the day on Thursday or 11 o'clock at night when Dan and I was talking on the phone, I might be stuttering a little bit. Anyway, it's been a joy for me. It's been a great relationship on the things that we're able to get done over the years as a council and you're gonna be missed, that's for sure. For anybody out there that didn't get to know Dan the way I did, I'm sorry because he works harder than anybody else I know. He puts his heart and soul in the community that he calls home. And as he told me this morning, he'll continue to do that. Just wanted to say, Dan, thank you for the time that you've been here. Thank you for all your hard work and I think hopefully the people in the county sees it the same way as I have. Lori, I want to thank you for your dedication and and also Dan told me that he'll have all of his Thursdays free now to give to you.
Well, I do appreciate the kind words and it has truly been a joy of my life to be part of this team. And the team isn't just us sitting here, it's everybody in this building. You know, we went over and talked to Judge Lawrence this morning and to be part of, to be part of the government in Berkeley County has been a great pleasure, great pleasure.
Yeah, and great words, Dan, because I know when I got here the first year, I said I wanted to have a Christmas celebration for the employees and I was looked at and said, well, we have that every year. I said, no, I said, I want to do it for all the employees, all 350 of them. So that year, the county council came together and all five of us put enough money in to pay personally, to pay for a Christmas dinner and a get together. And we closed the offices down for two hours, I think. And the ones that weren't able to make it, which fortunately some of the employees found this out years after, we made sure that they got the same treatment. They got food delivered to them. We thought just as much as for our court security, the people that couldn't come over, we, central dispatch, the sheriff's department, and actually the sheriff's department, we made sure all three shifts got food. And that's, you know, now we're starting to shift over to me and I, to we and us. And the whole county started to be looked at as one family instead of separate families. Some of it took longer than the others, but it's, your statement is 100% correct. The whole county is a family and and we work it that way. As Mr. Ryan will tell you when he goes to the federal government, he'll be quick to tell him until you all start working together, instead of pulling against each other, you'll never get anything accomplished.
I'd like to say, I agree with you 100%. This is the second time I've said goodbye to you. I'm getting tired of it. But, you know, your vision with the county, like acquiring Baltimore Street, one thing that stands out. And other issues that you have been involved in, you've proved your worth. And I hope that in the future, you can continue it. And if you want to be serving on any boards, let us know. Because I would be willing to put you on any board, except maybe the board of health.
That's the one that needs help the most.
I know, but I'm not sure they could tolerate it.
That's putting it politely.
Might be a little world.
And I've already spoken to the mayor of the great city of Martinsburg and I've said I'm passing you over to him to do with, and he's to do with you as he sees fit.
I had a conversation with the mayor last night. Thank you, thank you for the thought process and I'm glad you had, I'm glad it's the second time. But I say the same thing that I went out last time, if you need me, you can call me back up.
Well, like I said, if you want to serve on a board, you know, and there are several if you want to serve on a board, you know, and there are several openings. Let me know. I'll, 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 I'll talk to my boss about that and see where, what I can squeeze in. Thank you.
Dan, first I want to thank your wife Lori. She's, um, been a wonderful asset to you and I can say to this community, as well as your wife Jim, being part of the, um, the board of, uh, planning commission. Eddie, your wife, uh, how they put up with us, I mean to tell you, that's a job on itself and jacking that. But thank you for all the forth, uh, forward thinking for this county to bring us to the point where, where we're at with the airport authority, where we're at with, um, the, um, day report center, to all the vision that, that we all have an individual thought and process that we see. But when the time comes, we all collaborate together and we'll work, try to work as hard as we can to make our own lives better and the lives of others. And you definitely did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, I, I'd like to personally thank you for our, our friendship that we've developed, especially over the last two years, you know, we've known each other for a long time. But working together, we've established a, a good friendly working relationship. You're a hard worker, you, you will work as hard today as you did five years, five years ago. And, you know, you and I have not always agreed on decisions or whatever that's been done, but I will, what I really appreciate is that it was never personal. We walked, walked away from one another with a mutual respect and I, I treasure that. So, thank you. And, you know, your, your thought process is sometimes way out in front. And certainly doesn't mean it's wrong, but you have a, you have a, a great vision moving forward. And, um, you know, I got your number. I'll be asking your opinions on, you know, from time to time about different things. But, but thanks for your friendship.
Well, thank, thank you, Eddie, and I, I appreciate the friendship we've developed. And, you know, I, I wish, uh, you know, when you came on a couple of years ago, uh, I thought a part of my job is to welcome you and help you know, as, as much as I know, you know, to help you get to where, um, where you can do the best that you can do and, and lend any help that I can. And I wish that the, the new councilmen that are going to be coming in, into this county government office within the next couple of months, or next month, I guess, um, I wish them the same luck. And I hope that, I hope that you, the guys that are still here, that you guys will give them the same, same type of respect and treatment and try to help them do the best that they can.
All right. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, let's get this thing going. All right, any items from the public? Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, if there are no modifications or changes to the agenda, move, we approve it for Thursday, November the 10th, 2022.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
You know what, I should have just let Dan approve their last agenda, I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll let him make the last motion.
We'll take that away from Jim.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that's gonna probably off.
Yeah.
All right, any questions on the purchase order?
Where's Tracy?
Tracy's gone. All right, uh, Mr. Wine, no internal budget revisions? And we have change in status? We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Virginia Sign, Circuit Clerk for Sue Anna McCurry, McCully, as a clerk with an annual salary of $34,051, effective November 14th, 2022. A new hire recommendation received from Honorable Elaine Malt County Clerk for Dylan Beavers, as a part-time clerk with an hourly rate of $1,550, effective November 14th, 2022. A letter of resignation received from voters registration for Lindsey Zikofus, effective November 3rd, 2022. Any questions on the change in status? We have approval, uh, we have minutes in our, uh, read ahead for October 27th, 2022. Myself and councilperson Delia was not present, so entertain a motion for those if there's no corrections.
Mr. President, I agree with you, accept the minutes for October 27th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? And Al Bostain. County council calendars will be closed tomorrow on, um, Veterans Day. And the Board of Canvas will be Monday, the 14th at 9:00 a.m. And that will be down in voters, I'm sure.
Yes.
And I may not be able to be here, I got one of my guys off and, uh, so the other, Eddie and Jim, and Jim, you'll be here?
I'll be here.
Okay. You're not planning on being here?
I'm not planning on being, I thought, you know, something crazy happened and you had to, you know, change the whole results and I was still on council, I didn't want to be there, you know?
That could be pretty bizarre.
I know, so I thought I should just not go to that meeting just in case something happens.
Yeah. All right, so, um, just to give you a heads up, I may not be able to be there. Pretty good chance, actually. Be back in the chambers on Thursday, the 17th. Will be closed for Thanksgiving, um, on the 24th and the 25th. Boards and commissions, um, we have fire board, wait a second. Uh, fire board tonight, 6:30 p.m. here in the chambers. We have Monday, the 14th, 2:30 p.m. LEPC, 5:00 p.m. Water District, 6:00 p.m. Farm Land Protection, 6:00 p.m. Airport Authority.
No canoe day in town for the airport authority.
Okay. Tuesday, the 15th, 9:00 a.m., Councilperson Gokenhour be on WRNR, 11:30 a.m. Parks and Rec, 5:00 p.m. Sire District, 6:00 p.m. Stormwater.
Busy day, yeah?
I, I'm a lonesome.
Wednesday, the 16th, 4:00 p.m. Telemont, 6:00 p.m. Solid Waste Authority. Any changes or corrections? All right. We have countryside manor subdivision request to be added to the ATV ordinance. Any questions or concerns on that? Looks like, um, legal counsel, everything's in order and they have the, the percentages that they need. Good to go. All right. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Should move.
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Board meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. At a region nine planning and development council, Monday, at the, the city police station in the George Paris Conference Room, or wherever it's called. The guest speaker was Troy Truax from Michael Baker, and he talked about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And then at the end of that, I, because I was president, so I could speak anytime I want to. But, um, I gave a, a summary of our, um, input into quality of life program. Inwood Park and, and, I don't know what they call it, but the park there at the Spring Mills, Sportsland Paradise, the addition to the, uh, Fort Farm. And, uh, and gave, and the, uh, Mike Trail Expansion. Especially since City Hall was there, Mark Baldwin, Andy, and the mayor, and the chief of police were all there. So, it's my efforts to tell them, hey, this is what we're doing, what are you doing? So, that went over good. And then we had reports from all of the, um, departments, what they're doing. And also gave the, the mayor a chance to expound on the Martinsburg Initiative, because they got half a million dollars from Shelley Moore Capitaineur side. Encouraged him to get up and give a speech on that.
Yeah.
And that was region nine.
All right. Mr. Delia.
Um, that probably explains why Mark called me up for, and talked about quality of life. Huh? The, um, but it's always good to have conversation with the city man. And talk about, talk about what goes on. By the way, even though you're not the chair here, you can speak up whenever you want.
Well, I appreciate it.
I was gonna say, you're not accustomed to doing that, are you?
Well, after, you know, after Dan finishes talking, I thought, my head's all been talked out. Just left the thing.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna make it real short then. I was at, at the department authority, well, I guess I could talk a little bit about it, seeing as, seeing as, seeing as somebody else had their calendar all messed up and showed up at the end of the meeting. The, uh, but at least he showed up. Yeah, I mean, um, it was, uh, it was Jennifer's first, uh, meeting as a director. So, uh, um, it was a good meeting. We had, uh, we, um, started, uh, started the meeting out with recaps, a, a whole different way to, um, recap the, um, jobs and, and how the jobs are progressing along. So, that was a, a good way to start that meeting to, to see the new reports that we're gonna get, to be able to, um, see how active those jobs actually are that are on the radar of coming Berkeley County. A good thought process and all that. But, uh, um, I don't know, it's pretty much, business is normal.
Is Sandy Hamilton still doing her consulting thing with you?
No. It's all Jennifer now.
All right. Councilperson, Vice President Whitaker.
I have no meetings to report on.
Councilperson Gokenhour.
Uh, yes, sir. Planning Commission on Monday evening, had six public hearings, five of which were, uh, for Cardinal Point, development there at Spring Mills, is expanding that development. And also a change, uh, that you'll see is the public notices that are put out, you know, the, I guess,
Orange.
20 by 18 or whatever size they are, uh, along with the, the small section in the paper. I felt that we needed more, so I spoke, uh, to them about a platform to be able to let the, let the folks know more about public hearings that are coming. The only way you knew about it is if you saw it in the paper or you drove past down that road. If you didn't, if you turned right before you got to that sign, you had no idea that a particular,
Well, the signs aren't big enough.
Well, they may not be, but once again, if you don't drive down that road, you won't even be aware that there's anything going on. So, uh, they have created a Facebook page that will have public hearings noted on them. Uh, there will not be a section for comments.
That's good.
So, well, they, they want to make comments, they can come to a public hearing and make their comment. That's, that's how it's set up to do. So, that's just another avenue of making the public aware of different developments or projects going on.
Can I say that, Eddie, because I don't want, I don't want it to be a Journal Junction thing?
Absolutely not. Nope, I agree. And I did participate in the building commission meeting, uh, yesterday. Norwood and Mr. Seacrest, um, and Ms. Brown. Just for, really for educational purposes for myself.
Tell Mr. Norwood, Bentley Don.
He's, he's all right. He's his jolly little self.
Yeah, yeah, jolly little self. I always told man Norway, because when he get, got upset and gotten, got cranking up, man, his, his, his feet wouldn't touch the ground and they'd just be rocking, but.
No, he's, he's always a, he's always a perfect gentleman.
He's great. He, he's a wonderful man and, uh, always enjoyed him. I don't have anything to report on, uh, board of meeting reports, um, any activity on board and commission vacancies?
I have no appointments, but, uh, at the region nine meeting, uh, Sandy Hamilton is going off and you're coming on.
She's fine.
Yeah. Okay. And, uh, Jim Klein also designed this position, uh, for, Tracy isn't here to direct these comments to you, but, yeah.
The other blonde will take care of it for you.
You need to send him a letter for thanking him for his service and then we'll initiate a search for his replacement.
All right, uh, and I talked to Ms. Sign this morning and she is interested in being a building commission, um, member. Yeah, so, uh, need to get her to fill out an application, come in for interview next week. And she did tell you to give her a call on the meetings rather than email.
Public servant for how many years and still wants to do it?
Yeah.
Are you gonna have somebody actually take her a packet to fill out?
Yeah, yeah. Run one, run one over to her. Uh, yeah. If she's available, because I know that's pretty time sensitive. And this, this, uh, Ms. Sign, I know she has to, you know, appointee has to be a Democrat. And Ms. Sign is the strongest Democrat in the state of West Virginia, if you ask me.
Yeah, it's hard not to notice that.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to get a hold of Senator Manchin, you just call Virginia. But, um, we have a bid opening, Mr. Wine?
You do, sir, you have a bid opening for a mid-sized SUV. We do have certification and publication available. It had,
You said that just like that other bald guy.
I was spoken to last week by my seat manager. You didn't say that correctly. It is certification and publication.
Yeah.
It was on the website and direct mail to all of the fleet vendors. Uh, this particular unit, um, is to be used in our law enforcement division. It is not an interceptor. Uh, we did make an attempt to add an interceptor on to our order, previous order, and we were told by the vendor that the, the line is full, they've taken orders. So, I met with Sheriff and his administrative staff. They're willing to use these, these non-interceptor vehicles in their, their management division, so they aren't made for pursuit, uh, will be unmarked. Uh, we're struggling with vehicle availability. There are many, uh, county councils and city councils that have declared emergencies to make street purchases, so we don't have to go through this generation. We did get two, so the bid was written that we expect delivery now. So, these two bids should be on the lock, ready to buy by next week.
And Sheriff, uh, most of, most of us up here, not all of us, have figured out how to get you a police pursuit truck that will far exceed a police pursuit vehicle by just buying a, a GMC product, right? With the Allison transmission and Duramax diesel and put a chip in it and ain't nobody gonna outrun you. And it won't break down. Ain't that right?
Hasn't yet.
Huh?
Hasn't yet.
Well, the only thing I see wrong with it is it's a diesel.
Oh, no, no, ask Mr. Wine.
We'll get many more miles out of those than we'll out of the cars, for sure.
Look at the, uh, BCEAA's ambulances and engines they have in them and, and drivetrain in those. And they, they are always on pursuit.
Yeah.
Number one.
You could probably put a camper behind it and still catch the bus. All right, the first one is from White, Whiteside, Whiteside, uh, and they are from Claire's, St. Clairsville, Ojai, and, all right. A 2023 Chevrolet Traverse, all-wheel drive, $33,955. $33,955, that's for the mid-sized SUV. Thirty-three thousand nine fifty-five, that's for the mid-sized SUV. Number two. This from Kent Parsons Ford, um, and it's a two thousand two Ford Explorer, and their price is forty thousand nine sixty, forty thousand nine sixty.
About how much does it cost to?
Out there?
Yeah.
So, these won't be pursuit vehicles, so they'll be less lit with less technology. I would say ten thousand.
The normal one's about fifteen, right?
Fifteen. Twenty-twenty-two. He said two, didn't he?
I don't know what he said.
What'd I say?
Two thousand two. Vintage.
It's a good deal.
Yeah.
We have another one, Mr. President. This is a completely.
You wanna talk about this?
This, this one is for training and technical assistance for targeted violence and terrorism prevention. And I'm sure Tracy could speak much more in depth.
All right, Tracy.
However, we do have certification of publication. It was on the website.
Okay, thank you for the participation. All right, Tracy, tell us a little bit about this one, please.
This is through, uh, training, um, this is through the Targeted Violence Terrorism Prevention Grant. The goal's for this to have a consultant company, the expected outcomes from their assistance for this training and technical assistance for targeted violence and terrorism prevention will help Berkeley County understand and identify local extremist threats and persons radicalizing to violence, develop a sustainable countywide threat assessment team and management network to assist to develop and implement standardized threat reporting and assessment protocols, and to assist, to help assist us with the public, private, faith-based, and other organizations to connect a countywide emergency information sharing and incident notification system. And it will also combine building a countywide multidisciplinary network with connecting and educating the community stakeholders focused on targeted violence and extremism and threats to various populations.
Okay, we have one bid or two?
One.
One bid, um, and it's from National Policing Institute out of Arlington, Virginia. And their first year for everything involved would be twenty-four thousand three thirty-three point zero eight. Year two would be twenty-five thousand seven thirty-seven point four five. And then they have total direct cost is ninety-eight thousand four sixty-sixty, ninety-four. Project total, a hundred and forty-eight thousand five thirty-seven point four seven. Shows that all makes sense to you?
It does.
Lot of training going on, Sheriff. All right, is that good? All right. Okay, back to any board and commission vacancies, any activity there? We're gonna get to finish up on that one. And, okay, we'll move on to honorary county councilperson, uh, Councilperson Gokunier. If you see the honors.
Hi.
Hi, Jack Allen.
Do you swear in front of them?
Do you swear on this?
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold, uphold that Constitution of the United States.
And the state of West Virginia.
State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard.
I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibility.
To fulfill the responsibility.
Of the office of. Honorary council member. To which I have been appointed.
Which I've been appointed.
To help me out. Tell us something a little bit about yourself, please.
All right, uh, my name is Jack Allen. I'm going to St. Joseph's School. This is my last year, sadly. Um, I've been to Charleston before. I placed second in the state science fair. Um, I do, I don't really have too many hobbies. I'm in the school band. Um, I did cross country for three years. I play golf.
Pretty impressive.
And tennis? Eh, oh, and tennis, yes.
And what?
Tennis.
Tennis as well.
Ah, cool.
Probably, uh, ready.
What's your plans in life?
I do not really know what I wanna do yet.
Okay.
It just depends on.
And I'm sure we'll change his mind about being a councilperson here today after.
Yeah, we're still trying to figure out what we wanna do, too.
He looked pretty serious when he was giving that oath.
He does, he does. Sounded great. Uh, so, well, we wish you well. And, uh, if you have any questions or you wanna jump into our conversation and torment Mr. Barnhart, go ahead.
And Penny.
Yeah, Penny.
Have something to say, word it out.
All right, uh, councilperson issues, Councilperson Gokunier, Macy's naming rights. You have, uh, something up there?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, several weeks, uh, Bob and you, you come up, please? Several weeks ago, uh, Macy's contacted Jennifer with the Development Authority in reference to quality of life, uh, issue. And Jennifer contacted me about it, so we met, uh, did a Zoom meeting, uh, with representation from Macy's and had a discussion. I had spoke to Bob earlier in the day, uh, to get some prices. Uh, it was suggested to them, uh, to take the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and invest into our parks and rec system with, uh, new pavilions. And the, the twenty-by-sixty pavilion with concrete and, uh, the tables, uh, that go underneath it, the really nice tables, uh, came somewhere between eighty-five to a hundred thousand, uh, per unit. So, beings were doing a, a new park on the north end, one on the south end, uh, we decided that that would be a real good, um, place to put these new pavilions with Macy's name, you know, on the end. How they, they do the cutout in the metal, they're, they're really nice. Um, we present them with a picture, uh, so they knew what they were looking at, uh, to be able to do. And also, eh, that there would be enough money to do a nice pavilion at our flagship park, which is Poorhouse Farm Park. Uh, they had, uh, some concerns about, uh, maintenance, you know, moving forward. And then, of course, you know, the Parks and Rec would assume the maintenance of it. Uh, they wanted to make sure that they had use of it if, from a corporate, uh, perspective, if they wanted to, uh, rent a pavilion. That they got it, you know, free of charge, obviously. So, uh, those were easy, easy things, you know, but those were all contingent upon the council agreeing that that's where the money, you know, should go. Uh, Macy's did meet and they, they agreed with that, that the pavilions would be a nice addition. Uh, it would also provide, uh, rental for Parks and Rec moving forward, if they'd be able to rent those units out. So, um, that's, that's where I'm at. Uh, Jennifer or Bob, if, if either one of you have anything you'd like to add, please.
Yeah, I just wanna point out that the three hundred and seventy-five thousand was actually, um, they were already under a pilot agreement, and then there was a second pilot agreement that they ended up using the first pilot. However, they had already made the, the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar payment. So, instead of asking for that money back, they would just like, like, um, Mr. Gokunier said, um, I have a memorandum of understanding to make sure that, you know, each pavilion will be taken care of properly and, um, I, I do have the picture if anyone wants to see it.
Sure.
Who's this member of understanding between?
It would be between the county council and, um, Macy's.
It wouldn't be between, it wouldn't be between the Parks and Rec and Macy's?
Well.
It's coming from the county council.
The money is coming from the county council.
Right.
And there is an understanding in here that Parks and Rec will maintain the property as well.
Go ahead, Anthony.
It should be all three. There are, uh, a few things in there that should be changed.
Well, and Wood Memorial Park is where one of them's going, right?
No.
No.
Poorhouse and North or South?
New.
Oh.
South.
Yeah, New Park on the north end and Inwood Park and then.
Oh, so it's.
Expansion, expansion now to.
Okay, all right.
There's some, some language that needs changed in here. It's, um, it has broken things over in county council. Just, none of the real terms. Have you changed that? The version is in the. Correct the spelling.
I didn't correct the spelling, but the, it is Inwood.
Right.
The new Inwood.
But, so it would be, it should be between all three since Parks and Rec will do the maintenance.
Right.
The county's allocating the funding, putting out the bids for the construction.
Plus, we own the, what about?
Own the property.
What about the north Berkeley? That's between, that, the school board owns that.
We, we'll have to get the permission of course, to put the pavilion on there.
Right. I think, I think the Parks and Rec has pretty much got a blanket, okay, to do that, uh, whatever they want with the property, other than the school board wants to retain that property for some reason.
No, they, they said they can be used for recreational purposes, for design, as approved by county council already.
Yep, okay.
Which does include.
But, but since they have an owner to property, it should still be part of the agreement, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But I guess the funding is coming from the county.
Yes.
So.
You can see one of these pavilions already installed, something like this out off of Raleigh Street Extension.
Yep, yep. Well, I mean, it's, yeah, it sounds like a great thing to do and, and, and I'm glad that they're involved and, and part of the process, you know, so. And as Jennifer said, this is a gift to the county, um, and we appreciate that. Um, so I don't see any reason not to do it.
Yeah, I think, was it at the first year, they wanted to do a proclamation? Is that?
They wanted to do a.
I know they wanna do ribbon cuttings.
They do wanna do ribbon cuttings for each one, but they wanted to do something at the very beginning saying that these were going, the three hundred and seventy-five thousand are going to the quality of life and they, and what they're going for, and they will be going for the three pavilions. And as the three pavilions come and, and they're built, they wanna do ribbon cuttings at each one.
Just, I, I guess the important thing, I think the north Berkeley park is gonna be happen here before long. Actually, the, the one at Poorhouse Farm could happen any day, I guess. I mean, you own that property and everything is there. The south Berkeley park will take a while to get there. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's a substantial, yeah, it's in the design process, but it's a decent-sized project. So, uh, just to make sure they understand that, that that one will, will take a couple of years before we get that one going.
Understood.
So. Any, but is that the direction everybody wants to go in?
I think it's, it's created Macy's to give that, that sizable donation to quality of life for the community, and I thank you for doing so.
So I guess right now, uh, the direction is to move forward and, and then we'll make something official once we get everything cleared up and ready to go.
We'll have Anthony.
Taking the move forward, getting a bid together.
Right, right.
Change the language.
Yeah, we'll change the language and then have it signed and sent back.
And while you're there, Jennifer, I, yesterday, I, I wanted to acknowledge you and, uh, congratulate you on being the director of the Development Authority.
Thank you.
So now we can do that publicly as well. So, congratulations on, on being the director of the Berkeley County, uh, Development Authority and, and, uh, look to, uh, see good things from you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
You are applying for regional.
Yes, sir.
It'll be three months from now for the next meeting.
Yes, I'm definitely gonna get my application in, and I've talked to Tracy and Penny about that, too.
All right.
We missed you, Bob, with the last meeting.
Yeah, I had a, several of the meetings that day, including celebrating the county of West Virginia. Troy gave an excellent presentation of the Parks and Rec.
And so, Bob, while you're here, I'm gonna take advantage of the time and say, uh, all the stuff that we're working on here, um, as, as we talked about earlier, Dan and Jim did, the bike trail, um, Poorhouse Farm, additional property, south par, uh, south end park, um, the, um, north end park, um, continuation of trying to develop sports within to our first riverfront park. The, the Parks and Rec is, is happy with the direction that that's going in?
Yeah, yeah, we're, uh, it's a part of the, as Barnett mentioned, the master plan, we're trying to wrap up here. I've got the next draft of that, should come out next week, to the chair of stakeholders and boards, uh, by comment, put it to the public here by the public that month. Uh, but yeah, I've met with the county staff and I'm preparing the bid package for those, for those part area, uh, so we can get that going. I'm gonna talk to a lot of vendors to get quotes, get those projects, um, forward as well. And there's a couple in, starts higher until it's that size, so.
Right.
We're in pretty good shape there. I'll break around here if, if that comes back.
Okay.
I think we're about, so, that's pretty important and also we're ready to provide some comments, designs, and solve for the south Berkeley.
Mm-hmm.
And also we're trying to prepare some operational costs that we have.
Good, good.
But yeah, we're very happy to have you as a fellow.
Yes, yep, well, it's, it's, uh, good thing.
Yeah. Yeah, very excited.
Blow them out here before long, huh? All right, well, thank both of you and thank you. All right, next on our agenda is Brian Costello, Executive Director, Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority, Casey Custer, Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority Exonerations for the month of October.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we have here, uh, for consideration, ninety-four total exonerations. Um, ninety, we would like to have approved, and four that are being submitted as denials. Um, the denials are based on they do not fit the criteria that's required as a vacation-style property here in Berkeley County. So, um, are these, um, to make your standing approval on moving forward to give these ninety, um, exonerations?
Are these exonerations on an annual basis or is this just a one-time thing?
This is annual. So every year when the bills are issued to our homeowners in Berkeley County, um, if they own a primary residence, they have the option for their vacation-style property just fine to be exonerated, meaning they do not have to pay that yearly fee.
I'm surprised there are ninety people in Berkeley County. Also have a vacation home in Berkeley County.
So, the, the largest portion are what, are riverbed lots. So, um, there are a lot of those lots that, of course, are within this packet. Um, we do have a handful that are maybe considered hunting cabins, um, on private land that, of course, they only visit for a small portion of the year.
I had, one time I had this client that wanted to build a getaway home that was probably a quarter mile away from their house.
Really? We, we actually have a house almost across the street from us in town that the guy lives over in back Creek Valley.
Is that right?
And he comes in there on the weekends sometimes.
Huh. All right, so entertain a motion.
Be in town.
On the exonerations and to start with, ninety-four of them, is that right?
There are ninety-four total, um, ninety for approval, four for denial.
So we do it all in one motion, probably approve the ninety for approval and for denials.
So move.
Have a motion before a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, this time we'll take a break. Alright, this time we'll take a break. Quickly.
Back in session. Next on our agenda is Will Lawrence, and fiduciary supervisor for estate hearing, estate of Stephanie Deanne Porter, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
You can move back a little bit closer. There you go.
Don't get too close.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't dream of it. Counsel, no parties are here this morning. We actually have a postponement for this council's consideration. All parties are in agreement for this postponement. And the reason for that is both co-administrators, the respondents in this action, could not get their attorney to appear before them upon this date. For a bit of background on this estate, on August 2nd of this year, the deceiving passed away, a resident of Berkeley County. On September 12th, Caleb Wau and Brett Wau, W-A-U-G-H, came into our fiduciary supervisor's office seeking to be personal representatives of Ms. Porter's estate, claiming that they were the sole heirs as grandsons. My staff noticed that a third grandson was actually named as an informant on the death record they were proposing to give our office. My office pointed this out to both would-be co-administrators. They insisted that it was a mistake and that they would correct that mistake. On the same day, the pair returned with a corrected death record listing one of the co-administrators as the informant, and we appointed both grandsons as co-administrators without a bond. West Virginia law allows that without a will and without, usually without a will, we bond you for the value of the probate assets to secure them. But if there are only, there's only a sole heir or two sole heirs and they're both representing, well, the assets are covered, being that both of them have to do everything together. A week later, Justin Miller, the petitioner in this case, presented and attested holographic will granting Mr. Miller all of the earthly possessions of Ms. Stephanie Deanne Porter. Hence, Mr. Miller immediately petitioned for the co-administrator's removal, and my office accepted the will. Today's date was set as the hearing date for the removal action, and all parties were notified. On Friday, November 4th, my office received an email from one of the co-administrators requesting that this hearing be postponed for the reasons previously given. Their attorney couldn't be present. My office requested that the co-administrators, as part of this postponement, immediately return their letters of administration, which is basically a badge allowing them to handle estate business, which they did yesterday, November 9th. So with the proposed order copies in front of you, I ask for this council's consideration. It asks for three specific things. One, it asks for the postponement of this estate hearing. Two, it asks for the all estate action to cease until this issue is resolved. And it also lays out a 90-day, you know, period for all the parties to get together to agree on an estate hearing date where I'll work with Penny to get everybody together. And if those 90 days pass without an agreement, then my office will be forced to assign a fiduciary commissioner and let them argue before him, and the commissioner will then present you these findings. With that, I ask counsel to consider my proposed order.
You said you had a holographic one?
That is correct, counsel. A holographic will is a handwritten will. In West Virginia, typically wills have to be witnessed by two individual people who are disinterested. Holographic wills don't have to be witnessed by anyone. They would, I mean, literally if you draw up a will wholly in your handwriting on the back of a napkin that gives everything to somebody else, that's a valid will in West Virginia.
The signature has to be attested, and that's what I had to do for my mom. She had one. And I had to take her signature to the bank to have it attested that that was her signature on it.
That is correct. And, and the attestation has been received. The will is on public records. We've accepted it.
Okay, our motion on the estate of Stephanie Deanne Porter.
Move to accept the recommendation of fiduciary's office of the estate to postpone.
And, and postpone and to, there's three things you are asking for.
Yes, it's the postponement, the all actions, all estate actions be ceased, and should 90 days pass, a fiduciary commissioner.
That's what I said.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
I guess you're okay with that, Andy? I'm sorry.
I said, no, we didn't do it.
I figured you'd jump up or do, do a Clark will or something.
Will, if I don't see you, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Well, thank you, Councilman. I, I agree, and for both, both of you, I, I wish you all the best, and hopefully we'll see you around.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. All right. Next on our agenda is Tracy Gilmes, grant administrator for bid recommendation for RFP of SWAT Training Supervising Critical Incidents.
First one is, this is through the fiscal year '22 Department of Homeland Security Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention Grant, funding source Department of Homeland Security for training for the SWAT team supervising incidents. The RFP was published in the Journal on October 12th, 2022, on the county website and circulated through social media. Was sealed bid accepted for two weeks, closing on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022 at 4:00 p.m. To bill, to, one, two bids were received during the regular council meeting at 10:00 a.m. from Control Force for $17,500 and from PFT LLC in the amount of $16,800. The recommendation is that the submitted bid from PFT LLC in the amount of $16,800 met all the criteria outlined in the RFP and came in within the budgeted amount. I request the bid from PFT LLC in the amount of $16,800 for the training SWAT team members for supervising critical incidents be accepted.
Do you know how long the training is? I mean, is it a day thing?
It's three days, 24 hours, four days, it's a 24-hour, however that gentleman chooses.
It'll be held here?
No, they will go to Alderson, West Virginia, and the budget for the training includes travel, registration, meals, and hotel.
So it doesn't cover wages?
It does not cover wages.
So that'll have to be part of overtime approved by the council to add to that?
All right, entertain a motion on the bid recommendation.
Motion to approve the bid from PFT LLC in the amount of $16,800 for training of a SWAT team.
Have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? All right, I guess this one, the next one is for bid recommendation for RFP, Domestic Terrorism Hate Groups Training. Tracy?
This is, again, through the fiscal year '22 Department of Homeland Security Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention Grant for training for domestic terrorism hate groups. It was, the RFP was advertised in the Journal on October 12th, 2022, on the county website and circulated through social media. Was sealed bids accepted for two weeks, closing on Wednesday, November 2nd at 4:00 p.m. One sealed bid was opened during the regular county council meeting at 10:05 a.m. from Proactive Consulting in the amount of $9,200. The submitted bid from Proactive Consulting met all the criteria outlined in the RFP. Therefore, I request the bid from Proactive Consulting in the amount of $9,200 for a training class on domestic terrorism hate groups for law enforcement officers and public safety professionals. This will be done here. This company will come here and run the classes here.
You don't come home, the class is all right?
It's, I believe it's a six-hour class, so he'll do the same class three days so that he can hit all shifts.
Mr. President, I agree to accept the bid recommendation for FY '22 Targeted Violence and Terrorism Prevention Grant.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Do we, do, is there a thought process where all these wages are going to be calculated so that that can be added to the shares, uh, budget at some point?
My, April is getting that so that with, in this grant, you'll know what the cost of additional overtime would be within the realm of this.
And he got, well, he had overtime in there allocated for training, so.
Right, but according to the email I read, he's already far exceeded what was in there. Right, so this is, I mean, you keep, we keep adding training, adding training, you're going to have to cover it. If you're approving the grant, you almost got covered away, he's telling you.
Yeah.
You can't get trained too much, in this day and age.
No, I mean, you probably, at some point, you gotta forget about training you had last year and go with the training this year.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Tracy. Elizabeth. All right, next on our agenda is Jerry Wine, Deputy County Administrator, Declaration of Surplus Vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you're aware, as your new vehicles are coming in and outfitted, the return of the old ones happen, and then we either repurpose or auction. By the way, the, the online auction process has netted you more than you've ever seen for vehicles in the past. We've crossed the six-figure mark on some of the stuff we've sold. So we're currently in possession of two vehicles. One is a 2015 Taurus, and the other is a 2006 Dodge Charger. We're asking that both be declared surplus. If you remember, you offered us the opportunity to give to three sub-agencies around the state or other agencies around the state. The intent of that Taurus is to go to, I believe it's Calhoun County. It is one of those. We've got it ready. It was just, the serial number was missed in your last surplus declaration, so that one's just housecleaning. And then the Charger is a new take, and we just deployed a 2022 F-150, and that Charger is one now to be declared and sold. So really, the only option I, it will be the Charger, but we have both declared surplus.
Is it, is it running?
It does run. I look for it to bring a healthy sale price. I would expect it to sell probably over $7,000. It's a Hemi, leather package trim, it's a non-interceptor, so it's a decent automobile. High miles for, actually for a Hemi, it's high miles about $175,000. The lifters are already starting to lay down, so we're just asking for declaration, please.
I think we're also, I think we're also selling vehicles that are in better shape than they used to be. We used to, we used to run them ragged and then just basically get rid of them. And now we're doing good maintenance and taking care of these vehicles a lot better than we did in the past, so that when we do retire them, they are still usable vehicles.
Right. If my boss were sitting here, he'd remind you that this council has invested over $5 million in your fleet in the last five years. So you have truly committed to taking care of your staff and putting them in the vehicles to protect them, which the end result is, at the end, you do have a better product. So it's really a net. You have an investment, but in the end, you get more back. So, great job to you.
All right, entertain a motion.
Sir, motion to declare 2015 Ford Taurus and a 2006 Dodge Charger as submitted by the Deputy County Administrator. These vehicles for surplus.
All right, have a motion on the floor and we have a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
The, the next item I have, Mr. President, is we're looking for direction for a cable franchise opportunity. As you well know, you currently have a cable franchise agreement with Comcast. You renewed it in 2018 for 10 years. We have been approached by another potential vendor, and before we exercise the legal department's skill set in making sure we're taking all the steps moving forward, we wanted to ask the council to confirm that you do have the appetite for other mar, other vendors to provide cable. This is not internet, this is true cable competitor to your Comcast franchise. And, and just a, a scratch of the surface, your, your cable franchise agreement is not wholly solely, it is open. There's several different steps. Jeff can speak, that's why he sits there, if you just want to hear a couple of the steps that are involved. But we really just need direction if you want to move forward. There's no use of rich resources if the council wasn't open to going through that, which will include a bid.
I was gonna say, putting it out for bid.
It is. It doesn't affect your existing Comcast 10-year agreement. It's fine. This is just competition to that.
Okay. Well, Jeff, we don't put you up in front of the mic too often, so that's here.
Basically, I've just kind of gone through the law with this respect to these franchise agreements, because it's fairly complicated. There's federal, there's state code, there's state regs, and it gets pretty detailed. But the gist of it is, you can have as many franchise agreements as you want with other companies. You can't only have an exclusive one with a certain company. But we don't. The one with Comcast specifically says it's a non-exclusive franchise agreement. So it's perfectly open to others, as Mr. Wine stated. There is a process with an RFP, public notice of that, bids being, or proposals being submitted, then there's a public hearing in the process, and then ultimately, I mean, say if three different companies submitted different companies submitted proposals, you could grant all three to one or none.
All right, so now you got me really thinking. So in order to provide cable TV in Berkeley County, you would have to be part of a franchise agreement?
To do it legally, yes.
I was going to say, almost have to.
Yes.
So in order to help the community and giving them a choice, it would be smart, and we should move forward with this.
I don't see any potential downside to at least putting out of an RFP and see what comes back.
So the RFP would be, naturally, they would, it would be something that you would negotiate, because naturally, we wouldn't accept anything that would be any less than what we have now, right?
Right, I mean, you could put whatever, there's a number of things that has to be included in it, but then you can put whatever else you want to require the applicants to commit to.
Kind of like cable TV slash internet.
There's nothing that says you couldn't do that.
So does satellite TV come along to that?
That's what I asked.
It's just cable, it just has to do with the actual wires and cable.
So if it's wireless, it doesn't fall into that?
No, where if it's through, you know, you get TV through the internet or some, it's an app or something like that, it doesn't include that, there's a lot now, this was past.
Because I mean, we have more than wireless doing, wireless shooting, so they don't have to fall into that agreement.
No, this is only for the wired cable, and it's, I mean, it had, the federal rules haven't been updated since the early 90s, so there's been a lot of change since then, but it's, it's its own thing that they, it only started with this regime kind of in the eighties, modified it just barely in the early 90s.
So I'm saying, I'm assuming when you say wireless or wired, you're also talking about fiber.
Yes. If it provided cable television.
Yes. The, some of the vendors that have mentioned this have made significant investments in fiber optics to homes, the same, in that instance, it is for internet, well, the technology is there now to also deliver video over that same, over that same piece of fiber, so they can now be competitors on the cable side, so when we say cable television, it's not coax anymore. If we're lucky, you get a free Twitter account, Elon will send it down from the moon, watch TV there.
What's that, Star?
Starling.
Starling?
Yeah, but that's not even available, I'm sorry.
I saw it fly over one night.
Oh, they have a lot of...
You can get it in Berkeley County, it's here, I know people that have it.
Oh, is that right? So, so, and I'm saying that we're very fortunate in this area to be, have this even available, I mean, down there at Lake Hannah, we're 40 minutes from Charlottesville, 45 minutes from Richmond, you know, 40 minutes from Fredericksburg, you know, that's a highly populated area. Now, the county that, that I'm in, Lewis County, is not highly populated, but where we're at, there's nothing available, nothing. I mean, that, what do you call that, where you put the little thing up and shoot to, pick up a signal that's floating in the air?
A bridge?
Yeah, no, the point-to-point, you know what I mean, where you put the little, the little flat thing up in the air, and you can...
Get the local stuff, it's just floating around out there.
Yeah, it is.
The HD antenna or something.
Yeah, it's, it's terrible services.
It's called quality time, but the wife.
It's called fishing.
Understood.
Well, you know, she can fish. But, no, I mean, there's, there's no, I mean, no, no cable available, I mean, the people down there, the neighbors, they're, they're like, you know, they use your phone to hotspot off and stuff, it's like, you're kidding me.
All right, so...
Remind of Brad Paisley? I love to fish.
All right, so...
I'm going to miss her.
I would imagine, I imagine, I imagine that we would entertain putting it out for RFP, is, is...
I think that'd be the last thing to do.
Am I thinking correctly, Mr. Wine?
You know, I don't make your decisions, but I think it would be anytime you can offer competition and options, everyone wants.
All right, so the direction is to put it up, RFP?
And more money for us.
Well, it just opens it up for counties to, the residents to have a choice if they say that, if it's out there. I don't know how many cable companies would be out there right now.
Only one that is presented, we only have Comcast now.
Right, right, but there's cable being strong all over the place right now.
Yeah, so there's one that wants it right now, so I know you're going to give it to us.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Look good up there at the podium, buddy.
Just right in.
All right, so we got, the next one is a bid recommendation for free vehicle outfitting equipment?
Yes, sir, and the reason you don't have read it for me is I need to rescind that there were questions on the submittal that I could not get answered anytime, so I'll be back next week.
Okay, so let's move back to next week. Any reason for executive session between you two? Mr. Wine, all right. Okay, Mr., any items from the public? Mr. Delia, if you'd do the honors.
Mr. President, in Berkeley County, I'd like to make a motion to recess.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Dang it.
Wouldn't it be funny if nobody seconded?
We all did.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are recessed.